Hello Cock, I'm the independent chair of the Sheffield Street Tree Inquiry. Let me offer you a little apology to start with, which is we're starting today's session about half an hour after the time we expected to start because of a minor technical problem, and I apologise for the delay, and I hope you're not too far inconvenienced by that. I'm going to just start by asking if you would mind to start with just telling us your name and your role.
Yes, my name is Dave Dilner, and I am the person that founded the Sheffield Tree Action Groups.
Thank you very much indeed. Now, I'm grateful to you for coming today, and we really appreciate all your assistance with the inquiry, especially the conversation we're about to have. Just to remind you that this is being recorded and livestreamed as well, and at the end we will make the recording available for people who want to watch it and haven't been watching it live. You understand all that, you're okay with all that?
Yes.
Good. And also, as you know very well, the period of the dispute was a period of significant anxiety and stress and emotional tension, really, for lots of people in the city. What we are doing here is an exercise to inquire into what happened, why it happened, to support recovery and so on, but we do need to make sure that we don't inadvertently say anything in these hearings which is libelous or defamatory or problematic in other ways. I'm sure we won't run into that problem, but were I to be concerned about that, I would flag to you that I'm a little bit worried about it, and in extreme circumstances, if the issue's not resolved, then we might have to curtail the hearing. Okay. Just wanted to make sure you understand all that as well.
Pull your hair.
Very good. So, is there anything you'd like to say by way of opening remarks? I've sent you, as I am with everybody who's coming for these conversations with me, which I'm, you know, I'm very keen to have constructive, cordial conversations, I've sent you a list of topics and we'll work our way through those, but is there anything you'd like to say by way of opening remarks?
Well, apologies because my computer is not connected to the net, I'm having trouble connecting, so I will be referring to my phone, that may take a little while, but I'm quite happy to get on with it, proceed.
Okay, very good, thank you so much. So the first thing I wanted to discuss with you is how you first became aware of the removal and replacement of street trees and what your concerns were.
Okay, I'm going to refer to the, luckily I had the foresight to take a screenshot of the opening, well, the first question. Now, again, apologies because I'm going to refer to events before STAG was formed, but I feel it's very important for me to set out what exactly, well, founded my motivation to get involved. So, in October 2014, I was made aware of Sheffield City Council plans to install a 24-hour bus lane on Prospect Road in Healy, I live in Healy, and this would have required the felling of 188 mature trees which formed the boundary of a much-loved and visited local amenity, namely Healy City Farm. The more I thought, I would try to find out exactly what was happening, so I attended what was a supposed to be a public consultation, the council had notice boards up, and they were, one of these, the big notices in their presentation said 24-hour bus lane. Now, there were two council officers present, and I said, "What's this 24-hour bus lane? Sheffield doesn't have 24-hour buses." And he said, sort of quite offhand, "Well, we have to call it something." So immediately, a little alarm bell went off in my head, and I said, "Right, so help me to understand then, say, for the sake of argument, that someone travels, let's say between 2:00 AM and 3:00 AM, in the bus lane, would they incur a penalty?" And he looked at me and he said, "Are you suggesting that we let people get away with breaking the law?" And again, I'm a little bit taken aback, and I said, "Well, so it's a cash cow then." And he said, "Don't be absurd," and walked away from me, at which point his colleague came. And they were quite offhand, they couldn't answer questions properly, so I thought, "Well, I'm going to do a little bit of nosing," and what I discovered, to cut a long story short, was that they had done a tick box exercise in notifying the local community of their plans, they'd sent out 100 letters to addresses in close proximity to Prospect Road. Weirdly enough, Healy City Farm had not received a letter, so I thought, "Well, not having this." So I put my hand in my pocket and had a thousand leaflets printed, a thousand flyers, explaining what was happening, explaining what my concerns were. Oh, I had also found out that the main aim of installing this bus lane was to save one minute, that was the council projection, one minute on a bus journey into town, which it wouldn't have done, for reasons which I'll come on to later if you want me to, but the more, I had a meeting here, I think probably in this very room.
In the town hall.
In the town hall, with two council officers about this, and the guy that was doing the main talking, he said to me, he was getting really frustrated, and obviously quite annoyed with me, and at one point, his frustration got the better of him, and he said, "Why are you causing so much trouble?" I said, "Okay, where do you live?" He said, "What's that got to do with it?" I said, "Tell me, where do you live?" He said, "I'm not answering that, I don't have to answer that." I said, "I'll tell you where you live, you live in Wakefield, because I Googled you and looked you up on LinkedIn or whatever it's called." I said, "I live in Healy." And so, this was the nature of how the council was prepared to treat people, even at that very early stage, when they objected to what their plans were. So, moving on to the end of that, towards the end of that campaign, when it looked as if we had got the council to shelve their plans, in fact to withdraw them altogether in the end, they had been offered some money from the European Union to improve transport links in the city, and this was time-sensitive, they had to use it within a certain date, thus their rush to get it done as quickly as possible and just get through with a series of tick box exercises. As with the STAG campaign, it turned out that what the council were calling consultation was nothing of the sort, it was notification, they were telling us what they were going to do, and heaven help anyone who got in their way. So, I was out for a walk one morning, and in my headphones I was listening to Radio Sheffield Phoning, and I heard a woman, I later discovered to be Louise Wilcoxen, and another woman, who I later discovered to be Dr Di Pachetti, they were involved with the Save Our Rustlings Trees campaign. And that triggered a memory that I'd seen something in passing on BBC Look North the previous evening, where a group of people were talking to a senior manager from Amy, who I later found out to be Darren Butt, and he was very adamant that these trees were coming down because what I later found out were a series of false facts about the state and standard of Sheffield's highway trees. So I got in touch with Louise Wilcoxen, one thing led to another, and then I slowly began to see on Sheffield Forum, on the internet, that there were other little pockets of resistance in the city, I think Whalen Road, Bowwood Road around that area, there were people in Wise Wood who were unhappy, certainly people in Greenhill who were incensed at the plans for Greenhill, and other areas. I realised pretty quickly that the council were saying slightly different things to each particular group, so I thought, "Oh hello, is this divide and rule?" So I contacted each of the various groups I was aware of, invited them to a meeting at the Healy Institute, and STAG was formed. I was elected chairman, and it slowly grew, the, well, it wasn't luck, as it turned out, Louise Wilcoxen had her own media business, she was an experienced and very knowledgeable journalist with lots of experience that I didn't have, I did have, I had a broadcast media and PR qualification, but I had nowhere near the experience that Louise had. In those early days of the campaign, which was basically with SALT at the heart, there were Louise Wilcoxen, Dr Di Pachetti, the two ladies who were arrested, Frida and Jenny Hockey, a man, God rest his soul, excuse me, Alan Robshaw, a very knowledgeable guy who took the council apart at the first and the second Sheffield Trees Advisory Forum, forgive the emotion, I just...
Let me know if you'd like to...
No, I'm fine, I'm fine, I'll get through it. Yeah, so that's the first question answered, I think we'll move on.
Okay, thank you very much indeed.
We will come back to this.
Yes, that's completely fine, and thank you for what you said. Actually, you've also said quite a bit about the next thing I wanted to ask you, which was...
Well, I hope that, that's why I made it so long-winded, because I do realise I've already covered quite a lot of questions that are to come.
That's completely fine, but let me just check with you, whether there's anything else you'd like to say on the topic of how you became aware of other people with similar concerns, how the groups were formed and organised, how they began to collaborate, and how that led to the formation of the Sheffield Tree Action Groups? You've said quite a bit already, it's just if you want any more.
Louise and I were very quickly aware, Louise especially, very, very quickly aware that the council were playing a, well, they were, I think they basically saw it as a battle for hearts and minds, and their comms department went overboard, increasingly so as the campaign progressed, as it grew in numbers, and their tactics just got, well, in my opinion, it became quite despicable in the end.
Okay, we'll come on to what happened as the years passed, but the next thing I wanted to ask you really is, you having described how a number of people began to have concerns and groups were formed, how did local groups raise their concerns in the initial phases, especially from 2013 to 15, and what were you trying to achieve, and what was the response you received your concerns from the council and from Amy and from others?
Yeah, the SALT campaign had the help of a guy at the time who we referred to as Secret Squirrel, this was because he did not want to be named, but I don't think there are many people in Sheffield, certainly not that I have met or come across or heard of, who are as, well, he is a BSc in Arboretry Culture, very highly qualified arborist, and I was also struck by his encyclopedic knowledge of highways regulations and highways law, so he was a most useful ally indeed, and I do believe, and since he has asked, I'm going to respect his wishes and not name him, but I am aware that you're aware of him, and that he has submitted quite a body of evidence to the inquiry, although he won't be appearing before you. Yeah, so Louise and I set to work on growing the campaign in the media, in my capacity as chair, I very quickly became, well, I won't say unwittingly because I suppose it was bound to happen, in the way of things that, I sort of developed a media profile. If they wanted to know anything about the campaign or anything, it was me, the press and the TV came to interview by and large, there were other people of course. I went around the various areas to helping them set up their local groups, speaking at their meetings, encouraging people to get involved, explaining, which was not hard to do, how ridiculous the councils, not only their plans for the highway trees, but their methods of bringing them to fruition. So, I was just fired by a sense of indignity at many things, just the sheer desecration of environments, destroying huge swathes of tree canopy, et cetera, and, well, no, I'll come on to that later.
Okay, all right, thank you very much indeed, thank you. Now, you were raising these concerns, and you were essentially unsatisfied with the responses you were getting, I wonder if you could tell us a bit more about why you were unsatisfied with the response, and then how in the light of that, discussions evolved among campaigners in 2015, including the process by which campaigners decided to take legal action?
Yeah, well, I had, along with at least one other colleague, but never usually more than four of us, very many meetings in this town hall, initially with cabinet members responsible for the highways and street trees contract, later on with the then-leader of the council, Julie Doherty, council officers were present, they agreed to one-hour meetings, perhaps bi-weekly, I do not remember a single meeting where that one hour was not delayed by at least 10 to 15 minutes, by the council leader or a senior council officer arriving late. Of course, I have no proof, but the regularity with which it happened, I do believe, was deliberate, and again, I obviously have no proof of that, but it happened on far too a regular basis, and even to be kind to Sheffield City Council, it does show a lack of awareness of what was actually going on, they, I felt that we weren't being taken seriously, they were patronising, questions were asked and taken away to come back and be answered, none were, they came back with gobbledegook, yeah, there's no other word for it, gobbledegook, it was meaningless stuff. This was definitely an exercise in allowing the council to tell the media that we're talking to the campaigners, well, yeah, they were talking to us, but they weren't saying anything, and in fact, what they were saying was, they had a series of mantras, one of which was, "Oh, it's just a handful of people, it's just a handful of people." Yeah, that was by councillors, council leader, cabinet members, ordinary, well, ward councillors, officers, including the chief executive at the time, and they never at any point did they take us seriously, so in the beginning, we, well, I'll just speak for myself, I stood under many trees, and quickly developed a, what I felt was a good rapport with the arbres, the arboriculturalists on the ground, I always went out of my way to be very polite, I had, yeah, but well, because of my training and life experience or whatever, and the fact that I've also studied Gestalt therapy, I had developed an ability to put myself in the other man's shoes, and think very deeply about what's happened, and it quickly became apparent to me that the arbres here were not the enemy. We had quite a militant section of people within the campaign, who believed that non-violent direct action, NVDA, was the only method to achieve any success, I never believed that, I did involve myself in NVDA in a number of ways. I'd just said, early on in the campaign, I was getting information from people who contacted me, two within Amy, and three who were serving Labour councillors, one is still in post, two are no longer in post, they were telling me things in confidence, and one of the things which put me, they were after me, they wanted to get me arrested as quickly as possible because of my being the figurehead, they thought if they could knock me, it would dissuade the rest. So, a meeting was held, that I was told about, with senior Amy managers, and councillors, and one of the things that was discussed, and as far as I'm aware, never acted on, whether that was because I never gave them the opportunity or not, was, they discussed the possibility of getting me arrested for conspiracy, à la Margaret Thatcher against the miners at Orgreave. I took it seriously, but it didn't worry me or deter me, in fact, it just made me even angrier, because I don't respond well to being bullied, if I'm going to be bullied, I'll fight back. So, are we good with that?
Yes, thank you. I wonder if there's anything more you want to say about the process by which, and the decision on the behalf of the campaigners, if you like, to take legal action through what became of judicial review?
Yeah, we discussed, the STAG committee discussed how best to respond to them, we were successful in obtaining an injunction, I went to the High Court, I decided that I would be the patsy because I had no financial means, if they came for me, for what I owned, half a nothing is not very much, so I thought, "Well, I'm quite happy to put my neck on the block and take the hit if there's going to be a hit," and can't remember his name, Justice, he gave us an injunction, and that saved a number of trees, that was quite a lengthy injunction, which Sheffield City Council eventually got overturned when we, when I went again with, in front of Mr Justice Gilbert. Yeah, we decided, the committee decided that that was the best way to approach it, to take that legal action.
Okay. Well, is there anything you want to tell us about your views on the judicial review process, which you just touched on, the discussion, but then after the, after the judge gave his ruling, what discussions campaigners had about how to respond to the ruling, and how the approach of the different groups involved, kind of evolved in the months after that?
Yes, at that time there were no injunctions or anything in place preventing people from standing under trees and stopping the work on safety grounds. Initially, some of the arbres were getting grief from campaigners, nothing untoward, nothing violent, and obviously from people who were not actually, for want of a better term, members or supporters of STAG, but were very keen not to lose their trees. And I had a couple of, three exchanges with the Arboretural Association, who had contacted me to say that they were unhappy about one report they'd had of a crew who weren't even connected, an arb crew who weren't even connected with the Street Trees campaign, being verbally abused in, in one word, in Ranmoh, in Ranmoh. I sorted that out and put out, I was the admin for the STAG Facebook group, incidentally, I have, I've forgotten that bit, without being able to refer properly to my notes. Yeah, I just asked campaigners which, 99.9% of the time, there was nothing untoward, there were people who could perhaps have been more diplomatic, people who saw the arbres as the enemy, yeah, they, I want to be careful what I say here, because there was, I'll come back to it.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Yes, that's completely fine.
Yeah, otherwise I'm going to jump, and I don't want to jump.
Okay, thank you. The next thing I'd like to ask you is whether there's anything you'd like to tell us about the events on Rustlings Road in November 2016, you know we've had lots of, I've asked lots of people that question, but I'm interested in what you'd like to tell us about that.
Yes, I did listen to the PCC's evidence, and he stated there were 12 officers present, which astonished me really, because I personally counted 23. which astonished me really, because I personally counted twenty-three officers, and I heard at the time and since, when, as this inquiry started to unfold, that there were other police officers in vehicles, sitting in surrounding streets, streets in close proximity, including the dog van, which, yeah, there was a police dog vehicle, a vehicle clearly marked Police Dogs. There are a number of witnesses to it, we have photographic evidence, which in fact, I personally presented to Dr. Billings, and made known to ex-chief constable Stephen Watson during meetings in Dr. Billings' office and in the building containing Dr. Billings' office. The last I heard from Stephen Watson on the matter was that he would look into it. I doubt he's still looking into it, because he's now Chief Constable of Greater Manchester, so, but, yeah. Okay?
Okay. Is there anything else you want to say to me about Rustlings Road, what happened there?
It was devastating.
Yeah, okay, so, okay, so, shall I move on to the next? I can see it, so it brings back lots of unhappy memories, so.
I can't.
So, let me move on.
I can't avoid it.
No, I understand that, I completely understand it, and the event, what happened has caused a lot of, you know, emotional stress and unhappiness for lots of people, and that's one of the things that I'm aware of as I conduct my inquiries. So, if at any point you want to pause, just let me know, and I'll take a brief pause.
Yeah, yeah.
Let me, so, one of the questions I'm interested in is what the effect of what happened on Rustlings Road was on people campaigning against the, what was happening to the trees. In other words, how did people react to what happened on Rustlings Road?
The STAG membership more than doubled very, very quickly. The, a meeting was organised at the back of a tree called Delilah, that had been felled. This was in November, at the end of November, so I think it was, I think it was the last Saturday in November. And ten minutes before the meeting started, we'd had a chap called Rob McBride, who is also known as the Tree Hunter, regular contributor to BBC Countryfile, great champion of trees, who gave us a lot of support, and actually introduced people like, I mean, world-renowned experts like Jeremy Barrow, who is the go-to man, for instance, as of tree risk, highway tree risk, Russell Horssey, ex-deputy director of the Chartered Institute of Foresters, who put me in touch with a government minister at the time, Rory, he was a leadership candidate.
Rory Stewart.
Rory Stewart, yeah. I was due to go to London to meet with Rory Stewart, but there was a change in government, he was out of post, I think it was, it may have been Michael Gove who came in, whatever, that never transpired. There were, the leading experts, not only nationally, but internationally and globally, were all saying the same thing. What's happening in Sheffield is wrong. In fact, I will just, Ian Rotherham, Dr. Rotherham has already given his account, but I'll just give you quotes from Jeremy Barrow. The council have demonstrated that they're not fit to manage the trees on behalf of the community. Jonathan Poretz said, it's ridiculous, completely ridiculous, ecologically illiterate. What in God's name is the council doing, specifically working against all the evidence, all the evidence, on both ecological and health grounds? They have a policy of institutionalised deafness. And Chris Packham accused them of basing policy based on the Lady Bird Book of Ecology. And he said that he would rather not give any oxygen to the nonsense that's been spouted to try and justify this enormous act of vandalism. So, things by now had started to take off. You would think that at some point, because I did go into a meeting after Rustlings Road, I went into a meeting with Julie Dorr and some officers, and I opened with, help me to help you dig yourselves out of the mess, I was still chair at this time, help me to help you dig yourselves out of the mess that you've got yourselves into. And, yeah. I mean, if looks could kill, the ex-leader of the council, I wouldn't have been here today. That remark from me seemed to incense her, and that was not a very amicable meeting at all, as I recall. I'm not gonna go into detail, because with the passage of time, my memory may be somewhat sketchy, and I'm certainly not gonna quote anyone, but they didn't want any help, and all they did was double down on their efforts to attack individual campaigners. I mean, we all know what happened eventually. AME brought in a gang of nightclub bouncers, most of them from Scotland, they were throwing and ragging pensioners around the streets, well before what happened on Mearsbrook Park dismayed at the collusion from senior officers within, what I saw as collusion, from South Yorkshire Police, from senior officers. The officers on the ground, the, were great, until Rivlin Valley Road, when it, when it, during the time of the plastic trumpet.
Okay, so, we'll come on to this, Mr. Billings, it's okay, but can I just ask you about things that happened before those events, that I just wanted to check that you had a view of as well? In particular, whether there's anything you want to tell me about your reaction to the decision the council took in twenty seventeen to take out the injunction against campaigners and protesters, and also the undertakings that the council sought from various people? Is there anything you want to say about that, and how, again, the campaigners responded to that decision by the council?
Some people who had lots to lose property-wise, signed the undertaking. I was one of thirteen, I believe, who didn't refuse to sign it initially, some people did eventually, having thought about the possible consequences. I don't blame them, I understand, it's impossible for me to say that I might not have done the same thing, given their circumstances. I was still in the situation of having nothing to lose. Yeah, we had, well, there was no way I was gonna sign it, because that undertaking, for me, what the council basically were asking me to do was sign away my rights in perpetuity. The way that undertaking was worded, it's now or in the future, no close to it. I, I had not been sent the undertaking when it first went out, and I was stopped in the street by a council officer who asked me why I hadn't sent it back, I said, I haven't seen it. He said, are you sure, Dave? I said, I've no reason to lie to you. He said, all right, I'll get one to you. Okay. I can remember what day it was, but not the date, it was a Tuesday, and I had gone to a, my regular pub quiz in Healy, I had come home, I wasn't drunk, but I was certainly merry, to find like an A4 brown envelope, half in and half out of my letterbox, hand-delivered. I took it in, read through it, lost my temper, tore off the bit they wanted me to sign to send in, put two thick lines across it in black marker pen and wrote 'get foot' across it, and put it in an envelope to hand-deliver it to the town hall the next morning, which I didn't do, because I'd sobered up a bit by the next morning. Yeah, that was my response.
Okay, thank you very much indeed, I understand. You started to touch then on how the dispute escalated in late twenty seventeen and early twenty eighteen, and again, how the campaigners sort of evolved their tactics, if you like, in the light of new actions the council was taking. Is there anything else you would like to tell me about that period?
Well, I think it's worth my remarking that I came to every full council meeting, virtually during the whole of the campaign, asking various questions, none of which I might add, I ever received an answer to. I would either get some answer to a question I hadn't even asked, from a pre-prepared script that councillors read from, or they said they would take it away and provide a written answer. Never received a single written answer during those meetings. There was one particular meeting, I stood up to speak, early on, I was booed, slow-handclapped, and jeered by Labour councillors. I thought for one minute I was back in pantomime, playing Abenazza, it was just, that is no way to treat members of the public, but this is what we were up against. And when I was then at a meeting of Cabinet in the community, which I went to to speak, adjacent to my local area, I was very aggressively, I'm not gonna say attacked, very aggressively assailed by one of the cabinet members, who's still in office, I'm not gonna mention his name, who said, well, he called me a liar, he said that what I had said never happened, it's on film. This is, they thought, I don't know whether they thought they were bomb-proof at this time, but they just denied everything. We had radio Sheffield interviews by various councillors and officers, we filmed records where two local filmmakers were filming, so, I'm not making any of this up. I've twice been threatened with physical violence by a serving councillor, still, serving the council, and one who is not, he was voted out. So, I used to stand up at council meetings, and it annoyed the hell out of them. I used to thank them, the various cabinet members at the time, again, I'm gonna be careful not to mention any names, but they know who they are, I don't have to name them, everybody knows who they are, especially these councillors themselves. I would thank them and say that you're doing a sterling job on behalf of STAG Campaign, every time you make your pronouncements or do something daft, the membership grows. Keep at it, you're great, you're the best recruiting officer we have. And it's true, that's actually, factually what happened. Still, they weren't taking any notice. They were determined to plough ahead and crush the campaign one way or the other, another, yeah, the other, one of the other mantras, it's just a handful of people. There's more people want the trees to come down, I get letters all the time, none of these letters were ever produced in council. Saying something doesn't make it true without proof, without some corroboration, it's just hot air. And they were full of it. They could have turned off the heating in here. It was just astonishing. It's the insult to your intelligence, more than anything, that is so mind-boggling annoying.
Okay, I understand, thank you. The, so, I want to move on now, to ask you if you've got a perspective on one or two other issues. Obviously, in first part of twenty eighteen, eventually the council decided to change its approach, and there was a mediation and things moved forward. I just wondered if you have any hypothesis, from what you know now, about why it took, as long as it did, for the council to get to that point?
I think I've already covered it, pure bloody mindedness, refusal to give in. I said, I did remark to ex-council leader, I said, I don't know whether you're getting lost with this idea of a strong leader, I said, but if you had said immediately, Mayor Culper, we got this wrong, and I will come on to say, in my opinion, why, you know, the root of the troubles, but it, I might as well have been speaking to this wall here, it went in one ear and out the other, they were hell-bent on sticking to projecting this image of the strong leader, they didn't wanna be seen to giving in.
Okay.
They actually weaponised, Labour Council weaponised with the, especially with the independent tree panel, they weaponised class, plain and simple, accused us of being middle-class tree-huggers.
Okay. You said just now that you have a sort of hypothesis or a view about why all this happened in the first place, so tell us about that, please.
It goes back to when the contract was being negotiated. There was, there was an investigative journalist, Jack Peretti, that's his name, he came to Sheffield to interview me and some other campaigners, not about the tree campaign specifically, but the tree campaign as part of the Streets Ahead Contract, the PFI contracts his programme was about, and he blew the lid on how these vast multinational corporations work. I keep using the name AME, but they're a subsidiary of a multinational group called Ferovial, who, no, I'm not gonna, no, I could have said more, they've been involved, I'll just suffice it to say, they've been involved in some very dodgy ways of making money. They're not what I would feel confident ever about, using the word ethical, money's the So, when they were negotiating the contract, this team of hot-shot lawyers, they were up against council officers and presumably some councillors, who, quite frankly, were out of their depth. And this was not just happening in Sheffield, as Jack Peretti's programme showed, this was a way that multinational corporations work. They were too good, too slick. At no time was there any arborist, arboricultural expert taking part in these discussions. It didn't even, I think, it didn't even cross their minds to think about trees, from Sheffield City Council and their officers' point of view, that it was, it didn't even- even register in their consciousness. And from the multinationals' point of view, the quicker they can get in and do the work without having to work around trees, the better. It saves money that, you know, and saving money to them is profit. They got taken to the cleaners, basically, and signed up to something that they found it very difficult to get out of in the end. And in the end, what happened was that the level of disruption that we caused them took away their profits. They had to change. They had to change. They had no alternative. They were beaten into submission by the campaign. It's, you know...
Okay, so I understand. That's fine. That's your perspective. I understand. Thank you very much for that. Thank you. So I want also to ask you if, as you know, my, what I've said I'm trying to do through this exercise is to support the ongoing recovery in the city, but also to minimise the risk of problems re-emerging in future. So I wonder if there's anything you would like to say about what you see as future risks and how they can be mitigated?
I don't see a future risk. My mind's clear on that. And I can sum it up in two words. They daren't. They wouldn't dare. They know now. You don't mess with Sheffielders. It's just incredible. Sheffield has a wonderful history of standing up to things when they're wrong and when they're plainly wrong. In the end, this was not about trees. This was a battle for democracy in this city. There were posters and placards going up everywhere spelling "Democracy" with a K.
Okay. Now, the last thing I want to ask you, Mr. Dillner, in terms of the topics I sent you in advance, is whether there's anything else you'd like to tell us about the effect the dispute had on you personally? I don't want, I'm conscious this has been a difficult thing for you to revisit, and it's created lots of stress and anxiety, and I think everybody can see that. But is there anything else you'd like to tell me on that question?
Yeah. In the early days of the campaign, after Stag had been formed, I was doing the rounds of helping other groups to set up, chasing chainsaws all over the city. Anything that happened before my bus pass kicked in at nine-thirty, I was basically on foot. So running all over the place, from, I would be out of bed at first light, sometimes before first light, watching, keeping an eye on Olive Grove, because I live pretty close, and that's not too arduous a task. I was at it from first light till gone midnight virtually every day. I ran myself into the ground. I started not only to get hassle from, well, the hassle I was having from the council, but from the NVDA-only Corps of Stag, Cor, C-O-R-P-S.
Yes, I understand.
I, yeah. My motives in being so, as they so it, pally-pally with the Arbs and with councillors and officers, I went out of my way to be nice. I'd had that impressed upon me by my legal team in the court, especially before meeting Judge Gilbert. I was told that I must, I mean, I knew it anyway, but it was really drilled into me. Whatever you do, always present yourself as the reasonable party. And I knew this anyway, from this battle for hearts and minds. The council were all bludgeoning and wanting to club seals, as they so it, I think. So, yeah, I put... Yeah. My health suffered greatly. I started to not be able to sleep. I couldn't close my eyes at night, even though I was physically on my last legs most days. The minute I closed my eyes, all I could think about and see was trees.
Yes.
Hear the sound of chainsaws. Really interesting. I would just, I lost a lot of weight. People were telling me that I didn't look very well and that I was bad. But I put on a brave face and not wanting to give in and fight it through. When I was waiting out here this morning to come in, you've got the workmen outside, and they started dis-sawing. And, yeah, the sound of a chainsaw or anything like a chainsaw is just horrendous.
Yeah.
It's like massive flashbacks.
Okay.
I was, my nerves were short. I was totally, I think at one point, I wasn't sure that I wasn't having some sort of a nervous breakdown with it all. I had a nine-hour stay in hospital, being checked up because I thought I was having another heart attack. I'd had a heart attack in 2012, and it felt like I was having another one. And, yeah, it was, I'd just had a massive panic attack. And that was after an evening meeting, trying to resolve my differences with the NVDA section. And by the way, I'm not criticising anybody here.
Yes.
I've got nothing but respect for everybody.
Okay. Very good.
It was just wonderful what we have achieved, the fact that legislation is now being written globally because of what Sheffield has achieved.
Right. Okay. So thank you very much indeed. We've covered lots of ground. And just before we close, is there anything else you'd like to mention? If there are things you think of later, you can get in touch with me. But is there anything you would like to say just before we close the session?
Yeah, just to say that I came across lots of papers and notes that I believed were lost at the weekend. So I'm going to drop those off to Waitmans.
Yes. If you let the inquiry have them, we'd be very, very happy to take a look at them. Thank you.
Because I think they are quite pertinent to the inquiry.
Okay.
There's a lot of corroboration, especially the role played by some of the things alleged by South Yorkshire Police, and also the role played by Labour MPs, who, yeah, also said things that they wished they hadn't said.
Okay.
I won't say any more than that.
Okay. All right. So thank you again, Mr. Dillner. I know this has been, you know, very difficult, painful, traumatic things you felt you had to be involved with. I just want to reassure you, I would, we take very seriously everything you've said to us, as we do with all the evidence that we're gathering. I'm really grateful to you for coming and having this conversation with me today. We will use all of the evidence to do the best job we can in preparing our report and fulfilling our terms of reference. And as I say, if there's anything else other than what you've just said you'd like to let us have, that would be great.
Yep.
In the meantime, I think we can now close the hearing, Charles. Thank you very much.